Nearby. It's your show. Good morning, if you could find your seats please so we could have an on-time departure. Actually, we're a little bit behind already, so let's go. Good morning, everybody.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, welcome to the special meeting of the Greater
Houston Convention and Visitors Bureau. As you are all aware, GHCVB's business plan and budget are now in a calendar year to coincide with our contract administrator, Houston First Corporation. So today, we will report on the six-month transition period between July 1st and December 31st, 2011. We will also appoint the executive committee. Could I ask past chairs of the Board of Directors to please stand and be recognized? And if I could ask our current Board members to please stand as well. Thank you all for your ongoing service and support. I'd like to take a moment now to remember our friend and colleague, Kevin Ilgus. Kevin passed away last weekend after losing his battle with pancreatic cancer. He was a huge supporter of our organization for many years, and as far as I know, our first executive committee member representing a major non-hospitality corporation. He was a great leader, true friend, and a wonderful man who taught us all. He was a disciplined guy with an infectious smile and a wicked sense of humor in spite of his gentle nature. Kev, we all miss you terribly. This is the time in the program where I'm supposed to speak about our accomplishments over the last two and a half years. While our organization has made a lot of progress during that time, and as our leader, Greg, regularly reports to the membership, the Board, our contract administrator, and just about anybody who listens, we've done pretty well. Our fortunes have improved, but only partially due to the resilience of the economy locally and the more gradual improvement nationally. Now, I believe our success is due to the efforts of our hard-working team. Great group of individuals, very committed, all pulling together to make sure that Houston is well-known and recognized as a great place to visit. And after they do that, it's up to all of us to be great hosts and deliver on the promises outlined in the sales and marketing efforts. At least, that's how it looks to me. See, I've had a unique position from which to study our organization. As a volunteer leader, I could work alongside the staff in some instances and yet sort of be a spectator in others. I've had the chance to meet and greet, entertain, make sales calls, wine and dine, but very often, just to simply observe our folks in action during my tenure. And I have to tell you, that experience has fundamentally changed my understanding of our organization. After all, what is a CVB? What is our CVB? Well, we are a membership-led 501(c)(6) corporation mostly funded by public money, which owns none of the assets it sells, controls few critical success factors, and yet is held accountable by all. Well, after a career, my lifetime, of spinning in for-profits and dabbling in some nonprofits, I have to tell you, I had to recalibrate some of my metrics to understand the organization. As Board Chair, I've attempted to walk a fine line between two roles, part cheerleader and part coach, but insisting on a few really important values: transparency, open communication, and accountability. Mindful of these priorities, I suggested or encouraged a lot of new activity. Firstly, to evaluate any initiative in terms of whether it was central to our mission and produced significant, verifiable room nights. Next, to reach out to the community and the leadership of both the City of Houston and Harris County. To re-engage our hotel partners by holding structured sessions in order to make active listening a habit. And I supported every broad initiative of Greg's that I possibly could, going to bat publicly and privately to help move us forward. These included critical staff changes and redeployments, research to better understand the behavior of our tourism visitors, increasing our international presence particularly for meetings and congresses, and finally, our efforts to create owned annual trade shows. Alex, I know you've already hit the ground running. I believe you will do a great job and bring your own unique perspective to the role. My advice to you is to make some room in your busy schedule, to support our sales efforts when duty calls, or simply to make someone feel special when they experience the hospitality for which we're famous. Oh, and one more thing, order some extra refills for your pen. You're gonna be signing a lot of papers. Last, I'd like to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to make a contribution. But I'm not done. I'll continue to be engaged, just from a point a little more behind the scenes, because after all, that's where we all should be, doing what we can when called upon to assist our organization in achieving its goals. After all, our collective fortunes rely on the success we're able to create together. Thank you very much. Moving right along, we've promised you an abbreviated report, so at this time, I'd like to present the GHCVB 2012 Board of Directors.
Greater Houston Convention and Visitors Bureau Board of Directors. Outgoing Board Members. Ann Chang. Karen B. Clark. Guy Hagsteth. Rosie F. Hernandez. Derek Mitchell. Marcus G. Robinson. Rose Rougeau. Raymond Vermolin. Jean-Tay Wesley. Outgoing Executive Committee Members. Marcus Davis. Sonia Garza Monarchi. Gwen Goff. Claire Sullivan Jackson. Thomas Jones Jr. Dennis Pena. Thomas J. Rose Pink. Board of Directors. Fred H. Arnold. Minute Maid Business Unit, Coca-Cola North America. Chris Canetti. Houston Dynamo. Connie L. Cochran. Texas Southern University. Terrence H. Fontaine. Metropolitan Transit Authority of Harris County. Heather Houston. Lone Star Sports and Entertainment. Michael K. Jim. Harbor Sky LLC. Thomas Jones Jr. McConnell &amp; Jones LLP. Joe Palmieri. Hilton Americas Houston. Jesse Saldivar. Shell Oil Company. Patty Dale Ty. Humana. Current Board Members renominated to serve another term. Lisa Anderson. Billiken Consulting, Inc. Karen Becerra. The Principal Partnering Group, Incorporated. Alan Bergeron. Bergeron Management. John Benick. Hilton Houston Post Oak. John R. Breeding. Uptown Houston District. Andrew W. Andy Durato. Staging Solutions. Jack Drake. Greenspoint District. Bob Urey. Central Houston, Inc. Mike Florrie. Environmental Education and Consulting Services. Dean Gladman. Alley Theatre. Gwen Goff. Museum of Fine Arts Houston. Levi Good. Good Company Restaurants. Andrew Wong. Houston Downtown Alliance. John Johnson. Silver Eagle Distributors. Carlos Lara. Lara &amp; Associates LLC. Nick Massad Jr. American Liberty Hospitality, Inc. Lyndon Rose. LM Rose Consulting Group. Thomas J. Rose Pink. Houston Airport Marriott at George Bush Intercontinental. Nancy Sims. Pure Point Communications. Shatara M. Starr. The Principal Partnering Group, Inc. Lynn Tyras. International Meeting Managers. Linda Thrain. Rice University. Chris Tripoli. A La Carte Food Service Consulting Group. Edgar A. Veska. Memorial Hermans. Texas Medical Center. John Zotos. JC Holdings. Executive Committee of the Board of Directors. Chair. Alex Brennan Martin. Brennan's of Houston. Chair-elect. Steve Trent. Hyatt Regency Houston. Secretary. Nikki Keenan. Landry's, Inc. Treasurer. Nick Massad Jr. American Liberty Hospitality, Inc. President and CEO. Greg Ortell. Greater Houston Convention and Visitors Bureau. Hotelier. Dirk Burghartz. Four Seasons Hotel, Houston. Member-at-large. Edgardo Colon. Harris County Sports and Convention Corporation. Member-at-large. George De Montreux. De Montreuxed Automotive Group, Inc. Member-at-large. Andrew W. Andy Durato. Staging Solutions. Harris County Judge Ed Emmett. Member-at-large. Terrence H. Fontaine. Metropolitan Transit Authority of Harris County. Member-at-large. Dean Gladman. Alley Theatre. President. Stephanie Haynes. Hotel and Lodging Association of Greater Houston. Chair Emeritus. Donald J. Henderson. DJH Consulting LLC. Member-at-large. John Johnson. Silver Eagle Distributors. Member-at-large. Darrell King. Quality Hospitality Consulting, Inc. Hotelier. Tom Matthews. Holiday Inn Hotel and Suites Medical Center. Mark Miller. SMG Reliant Park. Immediate Past Chair. Jim Mills. The Houstonian Hotel Club &amp; Spa. Chair Emeritus. John D. Jack O'Connell. Retired. GES. President. Chris O'Donnell. Greater Houston Restaurant Association. Hotelier. Joe Palmieri. Hilton Americas Houston. Restaurateur. Chris Pappas. Pappas Restaurants, Incorporated. Mayor Anise D. Parker. City of Houston. Member-at-large. Patty Dale Ty. Humana. Don Ulrich. Houston First Corporation. George R. Brown Convention Center.
Ladies and gentlemen, the 2012 Board of Directors. Chair Brennan Martin, that concludes my official report.
Thank you, Jim. Well done, well done. Been wondering why he's been smiling so broadly all morning. Anyway, before I begin, I'd like to thank Chair Mills for his outstanding leadership over the last two and a half years. For those of you who don't know, Jim has had the longest tenure as Chair. Jim, I bet you thought this day would never come. On behalf of the Board, Staff, and Members, please accept this token of our appreciation. We checked with Robin to make sure we find something special for you. I hope this helps with your PIN situation. Thank...there we go. Very good.
Thank you.
Well done, Jim. As I assume the chairmanship of this organization, it's the concept of coming full circle that comes to my mind. I've been a part of the Greater Houston Convention and Visitors Bureau since my earliest days in Houston, back in the 1980s. Some things are different, some things are the same. Back then, we were looking to move the offices of the organization from 3300 Main Street. Recently, the GHCVB again sought out new space as a vacated City Hall. The new office at 4 Houston Center is reflective of a new era for the CVB, closer to some of our city's best assets that this organization markets and sells every day. The CVB is positioned like never before to capitalize on what it means to visit and host a meeting in Houston. The one thing that remains constant is the dollars generated by the Greater Houston Convention and Visitors Bureau. Last year, the CVB generated $597 million for future years. This effort supports jobs across the economic spectrum. Another thing that's the same is Greg Ortell. Back in the 1980s, Greg was an executive at the CVB, under then-President Leonard Ralston, a great leader. Greg was a few rungs down the ladder back then, but he was working his way up, and they spent a little bit of time at 3300 Smith Street as well. Brennan's right down the way. In the last few years, Greg, as President and CEO, along with Jim Mills as Chairman, have helped refine the image of the GHCVB, taking it on a trajectory of growth and prosperity I hope will continue during this next year. I remember that we hosted the Home Builders Convention back in the 1980s at the Astrodome. This mega-convention wanted to come to Houston because the Astrodome itself was still then an eighth wonder of the world. Today, we wonder eight times a day why it's not a parking lot. At any rate, back then, Houston was a force to be reckoned with within the meeting's realm. We were not the biggest market, but assets like the Astrodome gave us a prime seat at the table. The business has changed dramatically since then. In the 1990s, we didn't have enough hotel inventory to stay competitive. With the explosion of mega-markets like Orlando and Vegas, and even places like Indianapolis and St. Louis, we lost some of that clout. Other cities were doing things better, and frankly, bigger than we were doing, and they were outpacing us. There's no denying we lost ground, but here's where the full circle comes in. Sometimes, we can become so focused on the short-term results of getting heads in beds that we lose our focus on how far we've come as an organization in recent years in terms of reputation and deliverability. Today, Houston has regained its seat at the table. Assets like the Hilton Americas, Convention Center Hotel, the expanded Reliant Park, and even Discovery Green have made us a more attractive place for meetings and conventions. And the GHCVB has capitalized on that, as Jim was discussing, winning major conventions like those we're going to tell you about today. Now, a plan to add even more rooms to our convention package will make us even more competitive in the years ahead. We're back in the game, but we still have a lot of work to do. It's my firm belief that the hospitality of Houston has historically been, and remains today, our number-one selling point. This is something that we hear from return visitors all the time. It's the experience, the people, the genuine warmth that is our southern hospitality that brings them back. It's difficult for any other city to match our offerings on this front. At the last annual meeting, Jim Mills talked to you about his tenure as Chairman and his commitment to three things: open communication, transparency, and accountability. Ditto for this year. I tell you today that I plan to continue on Jim's path because I can think of no three things that are more important to this organization and our relationship with the city. Through the hard work of the staff and the Board, this organization's reputation within the business community is only getting better. But it's up to each of us, every single Board Member, as Member of the GHCVB, to continue that progress. We all must be advocates for the work that the GHCVB does. Frankly, I think we're one of the unsung heroes of economic development in this city. We're six months into our new relationship with Houston First Corporation, and we continue to build an entrepreneurial partnership, affording us an opportunity to enhance the GHCVB's standing and influence. This organization, each and every one of us as staff and as Board Members, is an ambassador for the city, and new relationships that are forged will be able to leverage as we continue our mission. Also, while I've been focusing on where we've been, as an organization, I'd be remiss if I didn't address the economy and its role in our business. While things do appear to be on the upswing in our country, these remain very challenging times. As I look around the country, I realize how very fortunate I am that every morning I wake up in Houston, Texas. Houston has regained all of the jobs we lost during the recession, and we're the first major city to do so. The hospitality, lodging, and travel and tourism industries played no small part in this. More than 112,000 people are directly employed in these sectors locally, and the jobs range across the entire economic spectrum. Our industry brings more than $14 billion to the local economy. This is pure economic generation, pure and simple. From hotels to nightclubs, restaurants to transportation companies, many of our citizens rely on Houston visitor to make their living. I also want to draw your attention to something that I personally believe is very important. The GHCVB is engaged in a community relations outreach initiative to better tell GHCVB's story and how we impact our community. I ask those of you in the room, Board Members, to respond when the organization reaches out. This is an opportunity to engage with the organization more than once a year at this meeting. I say this with every bit of sincerity, and paraphrasing one of the most inspirational calls to action our country has ever heard. And it's not what your Convention and Visitors Bureau can do for you, but what you can do for the Bureau. It's only with each of us doing our own part in our own industries, working together, that we make Houston one of the most dynamic places to visit and host a convention in the world. And when that happens, we all win, and it also becomes more difficult to find a parking place. I'd like to call upon Greg, President and CEO of the Convention and Visitors Bureau, who will report on the departmental achievements for the six-month transition period and the outlook for 2012. Greg?
You know, back in the 80s, 3300 Main Street was only three short blocks from Brennan's. And I was...oh, I weighed about 160 pounds. But I've enjoyed every one of them out. You know, deja vu all over again. I think I was doing this six months ago. We get to try it again, do some new information, I think it's important. But producing notable results in such a short period of time was a challenge to our team. And I'm pleased to report that departmental efforts over this short six-month period produced significant and noteworthy results. All departments have achieved success, but as I like to quote Bill Marriott, "Success is never final." However, the team's six-month effort have placed us in a very strong position for, really, for an outstanding 2012. Staff accomplished our short-term goals, broke a few records, and created some new initiatives. To begin, the National Convention Sales Team booked 133 groups totaling 156,000 room nights, which is 104% of our six-month goal. But I think as you...thank you. They did a great job. But I think as you'll see, from 2009 to 2011, our sales team had to secure 30% more individual bookings to achieve the same level of direct impact for our community. Now, anybody who books conventions and hotels and everything else know the effort, and the effort of one is one, but when you have to multiply that to achieve the same level, it's significant, so hats off to the team. I want to stress, too, that our numbers are conservative, they're transparent, and they're credible. After every booking cycle, a special committee audits our contracts and validates the numbers before they are reported, and once again, there were no discrepancies. And while achieving 104% of any goal is a great accomplishment by itself, there are some outstanding bookings I want to highlight. In October of 2012, Houston will host Starbucks Global Partner Conference. While most meetings that carry 10,500 delegates and 23,000 room nights would take three to five years to put it all together from the initial pitch to the actual contracting, the team had a matter of months to secure the prestigious conference. A meeting like this doesn't happen often, but when the opportunity presents itself, it requires nimble sales and marketing efforts, and a great deal of hotel-venue participation, coordination, and most importantly, cooperation. I want to thank the GHCVB sales team, the GRB sales team, and our hotel partners. A very special thank you, and a very special thank you to Mayor Parker, who took time from her campaign to come and help us make that pitch. We walked away with a win that brings with it $10 million in direct impact and a Starbucks-directed community service initiative that is sure to leave a lasting mark on Houston. The legacy, we're told, will include three major sustainability projects that carry a minimum of 20,000 volunteer hours. Houston is no stranger to hosting successful sporting events that achieve record-breaking success, and because of this, our roster continues to grow. In 2013, Houston will host the NBA All-Star Weekend at Toyota Center, the second time in just seven years. Scoring the NBA All-Star Game was no simple task. The Houston team, the GRB Hotels and Bureau, had to relocate eight separate pieces of previously booked and contracted business. Together, we did it. February 2013, 20,000 people are expected and only 26,000 room nights. And really, hats off to the Rockets, Tad Brown, for bringing the game back to Houston. Third time the Rockets have hosted. Remember, there was one that was hosted in a church back in the 80s, I believe. The game will air in more than 200 countries and more than 40 languages, offering millions in exposure for Houston. And while we're talking about sports, you know, we're all saddened by the sudden death of Robert Dale Morgan. His leadership through proactive marketing, his company, and his contributions to the Bureau included managing the Final Four, helping us book the 2016 Final Four, the National Senior Games, and many more that you are all familiar with. Together, we had plans for more sporting successes in the future. It will be sad working without him, but we will succeed, and we will continue the effort in his name. We continue to hold on and build on the strength of Houston's medical community by contracting national medical meetings. We just completed a hugely successful Society of Critical Care Medicine, 5,400 people. In an anecdote that needs sharing, Pam Dollstream, Director of Meetings and Continuing Education, was raving about the Houston Convention because of the attendance generated from the Texas Medical Center, but more importantly, the savings on speakers, sessions, hostage, and resources afforded them by the proximity of the TMC. Their speakers were our speakers in our residence. I'm happy to announce that SCCM has also committed to a 2022 meeting. Further to the point, in 2017, this year, this six-month period, we booked another big piece of medical business, the American Association of Critical Care Nurses, which reaches 7,500 attendees and will bring in 17,000 room nights. The strategy of booking meetings in our vertical industries like medicine is paying off. The support of institutions and the Texas Medical Center make that possible. Thank you, Dr. Winardi. Our international meetings footprint is growing. We have now, I'm pleased to announce today, a representative in Brazil that will work exclusively to provide association and corporate leads from Brazil and Latin America. Houston received acceptance into the Best Cities Global Alliance, will join a lead alliance of partners, cities like Cape Town, Copenhagen, Dubai, Edinburgh, Melbourne, San Juan, Singapore, Vancouver, and Berlin. We will see international promotion, be part of a lead-share system that should generate more convention business. But what's really significant is that in order for us to be considered, we had to meet an independent international service standard that was verified by Lloyd's Register Quality Assurance out of London to even be considered. Increased airlift is crucial to our ability to book international meetings. We partnered with the Houston Airport System on a sales mission to South Korea, China, and Taiwan. The sales mission was part of the new focused marketing contract that we have with HAS. During the mission, Houston was presented to Air China, Hanan Airlines, Korean Air, Asiana Airlines, China Airlines, and Eva Airlines. Sales is important, but so is services, and it is secondary sales. We are a stronger competitor when meetings that choose Houston meet with success, like Girl Scouts USA, which set an all-time attendance record with 14,000 attendees. It's really fun for Rose Marino in our housing department to have to go out and beg for more rooms in order to meet the commitment. Our services department is there to assist in... Our services department is there to assist in every step of the way, which includes pre-promotes to specialty brochures and liberal distribution of czatskies. Czatskies, if you don't know what that is, it would be something like this, which is a blinking shuttle pin. And we have a lot of them. We took them to the World Petroleum Congress. They snarfed them up like they were gone tomorrow. Our Houston Film Commission extended Houston's presence at the Los Angeles International Film Festival, American Film Market, Austin Film Festival, and Dallas Video Festival, and their work is paying off. We had 81 projects resulting in 337 shooting days and a direct economic impact of $4.6 million. While our success in the meetings and film markets is substantial, we don't forget the visitor, the tourist, in Convention and Visitors Bureau. To position the product, in just six months, we secured more than $14 million in domestic and international publicity, independent validation of the Houston tourist product. We generated national coverage, publications like Southern Living, Miami Herald, Every Day with Rachel Ray, which is my personal favorite, and Details Magazine. In international coverage, we have Süden Deutsche Zeitung, one of Germany's largest and leading...easy for me to say, believe me, and you can't read it, so that's good. And leading newspapers, Reforma and El Universal Newspaper in Mexico, and Televisa's Glitter Cafe, which is a popular TV show. The International Tourism Department generated more than 19,500 verifiable international leisure room nights by working with our travel trade partners, Turco Holidays and American Tours International. Last year's annual meeting, I said we were going to focus our efforts on the web to produce tourism. I'm happy to announce that the new and improved VisitHouston.com is live. Our site has quickly become a power player for leisure travel. A study we commissioned that reports on the power of VisitHouston.com. The study determined that more than 50,000 trips with 3.7 days per trip are generated annually by the website. They buy food, they buy gas, they buy hotels, and the ROI of all that for the website is more than 72 million. These results have driven the strategy to increase visitation and loyalty. During the six-month timeframe, nearly 1 million people visited and generated 3.5 million page views. This is a growth pattern of more than 20% a month. And features include editorial throughout all sections, the ability for an individual to plot what restaurants, stores, and attractions are nearby where they're staying, and TripAdvisor reviews for every listing on the site. And very important for our members, very important for you, we enhanced your online member benefits. General consumer and venue meeting facility member categories can now be uploaded directly. Amenities and meeting facilities information, they can upload it directly onto their page. These amenities populate our new Find My Venue search tool that is used by the website, visitor, and GHCVB departments. The hotels can work with our partner, Ares, to place packages and deals throughout the VisitHouston.com network. I really encourage you to take a look at what the new site has to offer. To all GHCVB departments, I applaud your efforts during the transition period. Job well done. Now for the year ahead. 2013 marks the GHCVB's 50th year, and Jack O'Connell was there when it was started. As Alex mentioned earlier, the industry has changed dramatically over the decades. The travel industry is invested in technology development. However, much of what has worked in this business years ago, what has worked years ago still does today: building relationships with clients, understanding and meeting their needs, and providing the kind of service that will keep them coming back. 2012 will be a year of interaction, introspection, and future planning. We're going to carefully examine our organization, look for ways that we can better communicate and serve you, how we can better communicate and serve our clients, and how we can better communicate and serve Houston. And we won't forget Job One. Our booking goal for 2012, from all sources, is 650,000 room nights. And this is comprised of 550,000 national domestic meeting room nights, 8,000 international room nights, and 20,000 which we can verify off the web and through leisure. In addition, we are identifying other room nights and economic benefits that are a direct result of our web efforts. At our last annual meeting, I talked about generating new annual trade shows and events. We've met with success, helping events such as Comic Palooza, which will celebrate its fifth year in 2012, Texas Black Expo, Jerome, where are you? Meet Jerome, because he can really have a lot of fun on the Juneteenth weekend. We tried to, and we worked with them and with Comic Palooza, and in the same way to elevate their marketing strategy and increase attendance. Now, we're focusing on Total Energy USA, a first-of-its-kind energy conference that will provide a forum for all energy sectors: fossil, nuclear, renewable, solar, cross-cutting sectors like energy efficiency. That'll take place the last week in November of this year. We hope that we will bring at least 7,000 attendees for the first year. We've got the support of Reliance, we've gotten the support of Shell, we've gotten the support of several other major national companies here to make that happen. We also begin to capitalize on our inclusion in Best Cities Global Alliance in 2012. The program enables us to partner with peer cities around the world that have a proven track record of hosting international conventions. We're going to learn a lot from them. I'm confident the power of marketing Houston with Dubai, with Melbourne, Singapore, Cape Town, Berlin, and others will produce measurable results for us. With improvement in the economy, the travel industry is showing some modest growth in most sectors. Convention and trade show attendance is stabilizing. Still, we have challenges. The discounting of hotel rooms and convention center costs remain a competitive fact. There's intensified competition from new product here in Texas, although I do believe Dallas is actually in Oklahoma, and in neighboring markets. And I've said before, and I'll repeat it, the lack of hotel inventory in our central business district has a negative impact on citywide bookings, making it harder to meet our goals. We will continue to promote new service to Houston Airport System, driving home our position as a major air travel market. To maximize our budget, we've developed a blueprint for securing significant grant funding for the GHCVB, which will be executed in 2012. These grants will provide critical funding for new and existing GHCVB programs and initiatives. And now, for the first time, we are offering online advertising on VisitHouston.com, MyGayHouston, and Houston Culinary Tours, and our monthly...and all of our monthly consumer newsletters. And of course, members will get a preferred discount. Something I'm often asked is where our 2 million online visitors come from. It's assumed that we reach only people outside of Houston, therefore don't reach local patrons. Here's a breakdown of the top 10 geo-markets that feed our websites. As you can see, our site speaks to both locals and the visitor market. With the launch of our new web network, we are able to offer members more than ever before. I would bet just a handful of people in the room are taking full advantage of the member benefits that are on the website. As you leave today, I encourage you to take the information pack and entitle your membership benefits distributed by our team in the lobby just outside the ballroom. As we move to the 50th anniversary of this organization, we're going to talk with you more in an organized way, perhaps with a consultant, but take the time to make sure we are doing what the members want and what Houston needs to sustain success in the convention visitor business. I hope when we get back here next year in March for an annual meeting, not a special one, that's our new annual meeting date, March, we are...I hope you'll agree with what Alex said, and that we are on the right track and moving the direction. Thank you for continuing support. I do have an introduction. I want to introduce our newest employee, and that is John Rolfe, formerly President and CEO of Go Wichita, and now COO of the Greater Houston Convention and Visitors Bureau. John? And I want to remind everybody that if you would like to tour our offices after the meeting, we have people stationed in the walkway across into the park shops. That's my report, Alex.
Well, it's been an exciting year, an exciting year to come. I just reinforced what Greg said about the website. It is a tremendous tool, and it's amazing what's being done. I have heard about it from my cousins in New Orleans. They were asking me, "Who did your website?" They are also on the Convention Bureau Board. "Who did your website?" "We did." So, we're not for hire. But any rate, it's a great tool. I encourage you to use it. There being no further business, I officially adjourned this meeting. And again, as Greg said, you're invited next door. Hope you'll be able to join us. Thank you.
(APPLAUSE).